Homes and they're they're a livelihood to this city and we thank you that um that we do everything tonight and decently and in order just as you would have us do. And help us guide us in Jesus name, amen.
Welcome Mason Robinson and he was the mayor here for years and welcome hearing here tonight and Mr. Brad Cottler, he was the city attorney here. You know, welcome. Alright, we'll approve the minutes.
Let me, let me do roll call first. W C?
Yeah.
Brenda?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Renee?
You're here.
Frankie?
We'll approve the minutes.
Let's see, uh, Mayor Lexson Johnson disagrees with on paragraph two on the second page. Okay, we've got some different opinions on that. For the paragraph on page two. I've been told it's seven to ten thousand dollars, maybe our city attorney can answer this.
You what now? Is that most of my Frank Sharp saying on the territory?
No, the one above it. About the three quotes.
Certain paragraph.
Yeah, wait, what's wrong with that?
Our statement is ten thousand before you have to get bid.
I thought it was in the, in this packet right here that he just gave us, said seventy-five hundred.
Uh, that hasn't been voted on yet.
But, but there is a resolution that said it was seventy-five hundred.
I thought it'd been ten thousand for a while.
Oh, I, I don't know. I know it's just, just.
Any, any board members spend down here from here or something?
As far as I know, it was raised to ten thousand dollars for the ordinance on May.
Well, the purchasing policy says. It says, uh.
That hasn't been voted on yet.
Okay, is it? This says seventy-five hundred.
The new state law that just went into effect, July one, has raised it to twenty-five thousand. Ten bills already approved there is raising it to ten-four thousand. So, that was something we were gonna tackle in the committee on adjusting about purchasing while with the resolutions.
So, all we need to know is what it is right now before we change anything.
We haven't been able to find. Do you remember what it was when you placed?
Clear state law, ten thousand, we didn't see.
That's what I, that's where I thought it was, but she found the resolution was seventy-five hundred, so.
Resolution probably said that, but state law superseded that resolution.
That's what I thought. And then they have the state law, state law went into effect July one, twenty-five thousand. So, if that be the case, then question at hand, it's the one bid was all the big need.
Are we on ten thousand or we on twenty-five thousand?
Well, it's what Macy said, you, you go with state law if you get back and get a hold of it since.
Twenty-five thousand, there's still be, there's still be four thousand dollars.
The state law went into effect July one, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't do anything about that different.
Because the state law.
We can't even, you don't exceed.
So, it's twenty-five thousand now.
It's what the state is, we can set our own. But, we have, we have, this board has done that.
Not yet.
We're gonna set a meeting up tonight, if, if it's okay with the mayor, uh, for the next committee meeting, this needs to be addressed in that.
And at the time of these minutes though, the seventy-five hundred resolution was all that we knew of, so that's why this was in the minutes.
Correct.
Alright, so that would be for the minute.
So, so what's the solution here?
Title of the next meeting.
We're gonna what?
Title of the next meeting.
Okay, alright.
And on financial reports, we approved the July financial report. It doesn't say July.
Okay.
But in retrospect, as far as the minutes outside of that paragraph, motion to approve. Outside of that paragraph. If you're a board member, you know what you wanna. I'm saying, is that everything else alright? I suppose it is. I admit it, I've been working the last two days, ain't that time to research all of it. Motion to approve excluding that one paragraph.
I'll second.
Rule.
Next.
So, we are excluding second, second paragraph, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Okay, financial report.
Are we gonna be able to have the September and Octobers next month?
Should, I just got the Septembers in and I'm three-fourths of the way through with them, I just didn't get them finished before. I had to send the packets out, so I'll have September finished by the first of the week and then if I get the bank statements in in time, I should have October by next.
Right.
So, it just depends on, you know, when they come.
Yeah, because I just don't want us to fall behind like we were.
Oh, no, no, we're not behind.
Jackie, this is control electric, does that, uh, get all the street lights down here working?
Yes.
That's also working at the lagoon, that's not just streetlights.
Yeah. Might have some work down there too. I think not a hit, Mike didn't come in on one of our boxes out there. They used to be all in one bill.
Well, I knew they told me, you told me they worked on the streetlight.
Yeah, yesterday.
But that's all I'd heard about, breaking that down.
Well, they changed, what they done, they changed them all from being like fifteen hundred dollars or two thousand dollars to prayer, and now you have to buy like a hundred dollar book. So, if they go out now and put a bug in or something, we'll have to talk about it. Before they transform and everything else, and now they don't, just work off a hundred and ten for.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as the financial though, we don't have Septembers. We'll head and approve of.
Approve all of us.
And approve, ban the bills. But we'll have to wait on, I mean, you got a little choice of wait on September. Motion to approve all of us and pay the bills.
One second.
Roll call.
Never seen?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Uh, Fred, I think it's little business in Appleville, can you give us an upgrade on what we had going on there? You had any of that?
Yes, uh, most recent contact with the plan on her was the day before yesterday. And I provided her the appraisal that the town had conducted to show the fair market value of property. And she said she'd have to talk to her brother who was also involved in the company. And she should know more in a couple of weeks, whether she's gonna agree to set sale of property without going into litigation.
How much did we appraise it for?
It's eleven to a, um, acre, uh, per acre. About an acre and a third.
They're talking to Macy this week, Macy, where are you? Macy says we have a runway behind those buildings.
I think we, I think we have a runway.
I've only been doing that.
We went all the way down, was running a new sewer line, all the way backed up. And then the big grain trucks and the, uh, big combine had broke it in.
But washed it several times.
Yeah.
What we're wanting to do.
How far is that sewer behind the Apple building, Macy, do you remember?
Yes, it does.
Right, you guess.
Yeah, it was like always there now to C and D Cafe.
It's not, it's not.
Fifty foot, Macy put the fifty foot. But, uh, do you remember, you drew that up?
That, of course, I wrote that in eighty-nine or ninety.
That's a long number.
But I'm thinking it's a fifty foot easel.
And they're running a new whole line of theirs, so they run it right beside the.
I don't believe we got that up, but we might have, we'd have to look into that. Because that's within ten feet probably of those buildings there. And what we wanna do is buy, uh, fifty-five feet if we don't have that easel. And then people that have those businesses, uh, you can have parking behind and not have to unload on the highway. One day, I won't be here, but somebody will have buildings, they'll have a business up there. So, then move the sewer back on the backside and then drop it off on Sand Street. Come on the road and bring that sewer underneath the highway to that manhole where Jerry's old station used to be and let that come down that way. We got an eight foot drop there.
Yeah, sewer's eight foot.
Drop that in there from one side of the road to over here where the, the, the manhole is, or the eight foot drop. May have to have a pump, but then, uh, Dozer, Woody Dozer's wife, the what, the poop has got up in her house two or three times. And it's a mess down there where she is, she don't have no sewer part at all.
It just runs level down there.
So, that needs to be fixed and, and of course, I think we got the money to do it. We get this money, uh, and to do all these projects, we should have enough money to do that. In that way, sell the people that owns the property back and put the sewer then, if you build up later, I'm not gonna move here, but anyway. Later you'll have a sewer there and if they decide to go back on the farm and do something, that sewer line will be available to, to go back further in that, on that farm for future use. Well, what about it Brad, you think it's a bad idea or is it a good idea?
I, I look, looking to the future, it's a good idea, uh, you're gonna have to, you know, the, the, the landowners involved.
Right.
Are not, not too concerned about our future, I, I don't know.
Yeah, but, well, I'm not, but I'm saying, you know, of course, I'm not gonna be here when this goes, but if this thing needs to be fixed, it seems like for years and years, it's been.
It's been a problem.
And it has handled the, the selling of some of those buildings of that.
I've been here forty-three years, it's been a thorn to my side ever since I've been here.
I mean, if, if we got, if, if we got money to fix it, uh, we need to fix it if we can, I think. But don't just fix what's there, we need to, uh, have the plans and I think people are agreeable. To do back there and behind those, people can have a parking or whatever back there and eventually instead of unload their stuff when their business does happen. And Jolie Williams, he's gonna, that old Apple store, he's interested, they're gonna put, uh, put something in there. If we get this worked out, they're gonna put something right there.
I thought the C and D building was Jolie's.
He's gonna put up, uh.
The C and D building?
Well, uh, it's, uh, it's a doctor, kind of. Well, yeah, it's more for the case, you know. Put a manhole over there and things. Yeah, right, and right there with Bobby Shaw. They're gonna go across, you know where those penis things used to be? We know, the, the cycle shop, they'll come on the road right there.
It's not what, uh, around the corner, that building used to be, that's under any gravel, I don't know what's there.
Oh, it's not, you can't, I'm so, you can't see it.
No, it's, it's got, should have about three inches gravel on it.
Oh, wait, alright.
I wonder what, when they paved that street, they didn't have a, a riser to put in there at the time.
Right.
And so, they left it, you know, we just left the money.
Okay.
And so, we just put gravel on top of it. Of course, when Mr. Bobby was in his building, we went in there quite a bit because we washed some old tractors.
Right.
Fresh washing and greasing all of that down the street.
Yeah.
We had to go there pretty much, you know, at least once a month.
But that's what we're trying to do there, that's the Apple store thing, and I mean, you know, you're, do we want, do the board want to do this or?
Mayor, I talked to Chris Tipton, he told me that he's hoping up on opening that restaurant up because of this. He said, when you fix the sewer, I'll open the restaurant.
Okay, alright, so, I think it needs, it's not just me, I just think a lot of folks thinks that it needs to be fixed.
Like, we're gonna improve the highway, which is the gateway to our city.
You know, the thing is, is we've been telling them for ten years that we were gonna fix it.
That's right, I think we're obligated to fix it.
It needs to be fixed.
We lost the annexation way down south, we annexed out south and took in that subdivision and we had to de-annex it because we didn't provide the sewer on down there.
Yeah, that, that was a two-way street there too, because he was gonna build lots of houses in Mid-Three, so that was one of the conditions on that.
Devil's advocate, if his argument was, you didn't provide the sewer, that's the reason I quit building houses.
He didn't, he didn't fulfill what he promised either.
Mayor, do we have any kind of dollar figure at all on what kind of cost we're talking about?
Well, if, if she goes for like eleven thousand plus a third of eleven, that's what the money, if the lady was saying, if they don't go up on the price, you know, that's. We got appraisal done out of the people out of Union City, that's what they do.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm speaking of this board under this highway up here, a hundred dollars, who are they, that, that price on that project?
Well, I have a look at the paperwork, but it's three hundred and something thousand dollars, was.
Was.
You know, it may be a little lower, but I think that's pretty stable. T L M, I think it's three hundred and eighty or ninety thousand dollars to do that. Now Frankie says it, uh, seven, eight years ago, or how long was it Frankie said he would do it for sixty?
When Denny was mayor, T L M.
Yeah, when Denny was mayor, he could do it for sixty thousand.
Six, sixty-eight thousand, what T L M said, they'd do it for him.
Yeah, it's just, uh, that's the way it is, money.
I know, we also gotta consider this four hundred thousand dollar project.
It's gonna, it's here, but it's, I think we also, we, we've got, we're gonna have the money to do that too, that has to be done out there.
It's gotta be.
But it's already in the works, I'd like to do that.
Right.
Ain't it Brendan?
We've got to do, we, we, we got to do.
It's already, that's four hundred something thousand dollars to do that.
Yeah.
Well, I, can I ask what project that, you're talking about there?
The lagoon's gotta be fixed, yeah, right. What it is, the areaions were up on top, you're gonna have to go under somehow or another and then they'll force our up through and you won't be having floating deals anymore.
Jackie tries to tell them when they put that thing in, that didn't, that it needed to be reversible, what they're doing and they went ahead and done what they did and got an algae problem.
I didn't know if it was something just right outside of our. I told you, Greg, far as the infrastructure, far as water, the sewer, now correctly, I think there's some money, grant money or money appropriated to have some streets paved. Another thing is, you know, that, you know, get the infrastructure, cause then if you pave right on, I know this is old, the plumber, every sewer, water, everything is old. You see, Jackie sees it, bringing links left and right and it's gonna sense really a paving over it when, you know, within three months. We're having to get it up, so I mean, if there's any grant money that could be applied for, for the water and sewer infrastructure, you know, street in time, block at a time or something, those, they address it up.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
We have a, we have a grant that's one point seven, that includes the water plant, the lagoon, the pump.
Being similar to that.
We already have a grant that's in the works, we're just waiting on T deck to finish up crossing the Ts and dotting Is with us, for that part of it.
That's great, yeah, we're about to do the, the city, the city water, the city sewer up down our streets that we live on and everything, it's really, you know, when you pave over, it's like putting lipstick on a pig, at the end of the day, you still got pig, you know, so. You know, address the issues underground, you know, far as the infrastructures, then dress it up and, and you know, yeah, there's gonna be people cry, I wish my creek was paved and all this and all that, but, you know. That's something needs to be addressed, you know, before the paving, I think, you take my opinion, a pound of dog gets you cooked off anyway. They put us on.
Obviously, what happened, they're doing these highways, big projects, they got miles of it, and they're not gonna do any small projects right now, but they're gonna do it in May or February, they're gonna quit, what, about November, they will be, that plant will be shut down, so.
Well, you know, I talked to Union City pavement, they didn't have the, the number that they needed to have or in order to be able to get a bid anytime, did they? You said they couldn't put a bid in, didn't they?
No, they had a, uh, T L M sent them the paperwork and everything when they sent it to Ford and they, they were told to show up at the bid opening.
I talked, I talked to the gentleman over there, he said they had to have some kind of number to go along with, uh, what, whatever he was sending, but they do have it now.
I mean, but, but the bid opening's already passed.
Re-bid it next Friday, Don, they will be able to bid.
No, apparently they can do that.
Yeah, those guys does good work, you know, they do small jobs, you know.
Not surprised that they didn't bid.
Well, I talked to him, he said they didn't have the correct number that they were, that state was asking for at the time, but they do have it, at the time I talked to him, he does have it, but it was too late to get the bid.
Yeah, okay.
But this one it may is for construction.
Yeah, Ford's got the contract right now.
Oh, really?
Yep. Okay, we, if we decided we're gonna, we're gonna try to go through with this project, where is that what we're gonna do? Just a minute, uh, we, uh, is that, we're gonna try to buy the land?
Well, I probably already voted on that to do that.
You can use this county money to do that.
Okay, 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 alright.
At least we have the land.
We're gonna be alright with that, that's not a lot of money.
Eleven thousand, not the.
I'll knock fifteen thousand off it.
We were thinking it was gonna be a lot smaller than that.
Yeah, right, well, they might come back with a different number.
But I know we voted on it before, with the COVID money, no, it was the soon.
We just could never get, we need, we can't get the money.
Yeah, yeah, so we voted on to go ahead and buy this land and take care of it as soon as we could.
So, Brandon, I guess we're gonna continue to keep us updated, see if we can get this done for, we'll take it down low.
Uh, uh, yeah, well, I should know something within a couple of weeks, I'll follow up next week. You, you know, you also got this litigation on it.
Yeah, I know about that.
Marsh Brothers, you know.
Yeah. Is that on hold or is it coming?
Uh, it's got to be addressed something on it, uh, but.
We're gonna have to, something, we're gonna put sixty thousand.
Sixty, they offered settle for sixty.
Fred, did you get on his email, does he?
I did, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so I'm still trying to re- reconcile some payments and disbursements. And it's been a challenge.
Okay.
Mayor, on that situation, a, a previous water plant man told me what happened on that was they, they just took it on themselves to rip wrap part of that property out there and they wouldn't approve to do that.
Okay, so that's what happened.
That's what it's all.
This one coming in.
So, that's where the sixty thousand is or?
Yeah.
Somebody said it was.
It was probably more than that, they say they're willing to settle for sixty, but, uh, the inspector out there that was on that job out there, they didn't have the approval to, to rip wrap anymore than, than they were told to start with.
In other words, they need to amend the contract or something before we, to get any more money to do this, right?
We were, we were told by T L M, we did not owe it. It was not included in the contract. They just went ahead and done some more rip wrap work out there, Don, that they didn't get prior approval to.
Yeah, right. But in other words, we're just gonna, they're gonna have to eat that?
Uh, that's, that's important, and so, so if, if, if the town was to agree to the settlement, you know, we're gonna go to mediation and try to resolve it through mediation. And then if they can't be resolved mediation, we're, that's a second trial.
That's where we're gonna have to get T L M about, cause I mean, he fact told us that that was, that was not included in the, when they, when they bented on it, that was not included.
Right, I, I, and the documentation is very clear, the, the town was not gonna pay for the overage, which was like sixty-seven thousand. They were bidding on two thousand tons and they, they claimed thirty-six hundred tons, thereabouts. So, they're wanting the town to pay the ex- extra sixty-seven thousand.
We paid what T L M?
The real strength, but, but they didn't, they didn't go through the proper procedure, getting the change of order, but it wasn't granted.
I was just gonna address that, that sewer problem we're having, we're having trouble because we got, the, the truck route is not posted to where these truckers know where to be on walk road. So, we're to, cause they go down actually front of my house and, and there's, there's four or five pipes that's been busted on my street. We'll fill wheel. Uh, on hopper.
I'm gonna guess that a little bit, because we keep the big truck off the highway.
We got signs on the highways, go through.
They pick it up so where they can see them.
The deal, you got Cisco that comes into the school, they're a light loaded truck, they bring food to the nursing home. And they come right down like, uh, King Street here, but they're not loaded, they got food in there, a little bit of food, that's not like corn or grain or something like that. And, you know, we've had a few trucks get off the route by accident, the GPS carries them the wrong way and it misses them up, these guys are not even from here. They're from New York and other places, they come in here by the GPS and it sends them the wrong route. We do have, needs a couple more sign, try to town point to the truck route. But every once in a while they get off and it just happens, and that happens in every town. And I had one knock down about ten thousand dollars worth of lines and that company paid for all that. But we mainly try to keep them off of there if we can, but if they're light loaded truck like Cisco, they're not hurting anything coming down through here. Cause they're not loaded, not like a big old grain truck.
And then you got the truck, uh, like even at my place on King Street, that soda truck comes and fills the machines and stuff like.
Right, they're not really.
Places that are zoned where they can, they're needing deliveries, you gotta let them deliver.
Gotta be able to get there.
I don't know what that's, that is, but I'm just saying.
Alright, we, we wanna move on, Jack McNeil, I think you're here for reappraisal of the property, if you wanna come in and hear us hiding, but she.
Yeah, but I can, I'll just go talk. No, just quick, uh, just something, I gotta, I'll let y'all know. I hate to get in the middle like that, man, everybody around me. No, uh, so what we gotta do is, uh, y'all know every five years, I'm sure y'all are very familiar with our reappraisal by now especially, uh, so every five years, we were, the state compter's office, division of property sessions, reappraisers, the whole county. And, uh, so you originally will be, uh, brought up to market value, and so what'll happen is, uh, they've already started, usually they go back one year of their sales, but, you know, they can't, it's not got the sales, sometimes with the comps for one year, so they usually do two, something like that. Uh, so they'll take those and they're gonna develop, uh, residential rates, commercial rates, uh, farm rates and just that kind of thing, and what'll happen is, uh, in April, we'll have the change notices go out and so every property owner will get a change notice. And it'll let you know what your, uh, setting was before and what it was after, and then you'll have a chance to come up and it'll have be, uh, four or five people from the compter's office, the property sessions. And, uh, you let them know, if you, you know, if you don't agree, kinda what's going on, that kind of thing, and, uh, they'll work with you and then, uh, another round of change notices goes out about May and then you'll have a chance to come to the equalization board. So, once that happens, uh.
But you only do that if you're disgruntled.
Right, 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 and then, you know, and it could be, I mean, it could be a number of things, there could be something going on out there that just wasn't seen, wasn't called, so come up, let us get it right, that's the big thing, it needs to be right. And, uh, so after those two rounds, we'll, uh, go out, the, the city will get a certified tax rate. And what that is, is where the reappraisal is revenue neutral, is the idea behind it, as you're saying, in the instance that we're in now, you know, we kind of guarantee, I think everybody's in agreement that the values are, are, are gonna go up. I mean, you know, we've seen that ever since twenty-twenty, uh, steady increase in value, y'all seen Zillow, y'all seen stuff shared on Facebook, y'all know what homes are going for. Um, so, we probably anticipate that the certified tax rate is gonna be lower than what the tax rate is now to generate the same amount of tax revenue. So, the, the, y'all have a chance to, to vote to accept the certified tax rate, go blow it, or exceed it.
Mr. Mayor? Okay, the first process though, when it comes out and everything, they appear before the county equitation board.
Well, that'll be the second.
That goes to state first?
Well, it goes, so they'll have reappraisal hearings, uh, is, is what those are called, and they're informal hearings. They'll be probably the end of April, first of May, so what'll happen, it'll be usually, I think the last time, it lasted about two weeks. So what'll happen, it'll be usually, I think the last time, it lasted about two weeks, and it'll probably be about two weeks, same thing. And all that is, is, let's say for instance, uh, maybe a year ago, two years ago, a house burned. We didn't know anything about it, and, you know, maybe the assessment was, was pretty low, where maybe the property owner didn't really know that the house was still on there, it might have been, you know, dilapidated even before it burned, but they get this change notice where it's been a, you know, a considerable increase, and they're like, oh, you know, there's not even a house there. Well, they're gonna come in and they're gonna say, you know, there's not a house there. So it's an informal hearing, kinda like a, a fax, like, like, I know last time we had, um, I'd say forty or fifty landowners come in where, uh, when the greenbelt and ag grates went up, they were like, uh, you know, well, this area is probably not, you know, it's kinda a sandblow, or something like that's developed. So we'll go to the map, check the grates, and we'll get those fixed. Just one of those things where sales, you know, couldn't have found that, only, you know, property owners gonna know those changes. And then, another round of change notices will go out, and that's when you'll go to the.
Then, then when you note, send the notices out in April, do those go directly to the property address, or do they go to the lien holder, the banks or whoever?
Uh, they go to, nine times out of ten, so the deed will be the, the property owner. Yeah, whenever they, you know, record a deed, it'll go to the property owner themselves.
And then the bank, you live at the bank also?
It usually, what would happen is a lot of the banks, the bigger mortgage companies, they'll have a file request, and they'll get those like from the trustee's office and sales to know.
Okay.
You know, yeah, but, but, uh, change notices will come to, if you got your tax bill, you, you'll get your change notice, it'll be the same mailing address.
So as far as the sales, uh, data that they use, are there certain sales that they exclude?
Yes, oh, yes, several, um, and, and, and usually what'll happen is, uh, one of the most common ones, you get a warranty deed in, that's got four parcels, I mean, four different parcels. Well, there's not really a good way to divide that one sale price up over those four parcels, so that would be disqualified for a multi parcel, for instance. Or, uh, if there's a lot beside your house, uh, the same normal price we might think is between five and ten thousand, so it takes twenty thousand for it. Well, it's a joint property, so that's probably gonna get disqualified, cause that's really not, you know, in the, the market value. So we're trying to throw all those out that you can, you know, the ones you know is not in line with what's going on. So, yeah.
So you think a property tax rate would be lower, is that what you're saying?
Of the rate itself, the certified rate, yes. So, so what happens is, uh, in a reappraisal year, if the values go up, the certified rate is gonna go down, because it's a, it's a revenue neutral reappraisal. And that means that whether the municipality or the county can't bring in any more money because of a reappraisal. Now, they can exceed that rate, you know, and, and bring in more. Or the certified rate will be, make it revenue neutral, is just the idea behind that.
It would be, bringing the same amount of money that it would last year.
Right, right.
And it's up the county court, or the body here, to either raise or lower.
Right, so either accept the rate, go blow the certified tax rate, or exceed it. And, and that will come out, uh, probably, probably in June is, is when that, in the June is the idea, uh, that that should come out, so.
You know, we're, they're gonna, you're gonna reduce that three sixty one, or whatever it is right now, it'll come back to what, about three ten or three twenty?
It could, it just depends, yeah, after, after the, the hearings and everything.
Place not many, or if they choose to leave it, you stay.
No, they have to vote it, I believe, okay?
Yeah, it'll be true, yeah, each, each government body, it'll be two reasons, uh, you have to, you know, do, you know, publicize and that kinda thing, it has to be done twice. To exceed, if you're, if you're exceeding the certified rate, it'll be two, two reasons.
We usually tie it in with budget.
Yeah, but times it to be where it's expected.
Well, we've always done it, if you, if you do.
Well, a- and if you, if you exceed it, you know, you just have to, you have to have it twice.
Who, who are the members on the equalization board?
Uh, right now, it's, um, uh, Mr. Brad Kaiser, uh, first first, Craig Clay, and, uh, so, Danny Johnson. And, uh, forgive me. Mr. Johnson, let me look. Well, I'll tell you. And Mr. Terry P, so it's five. And then like the first week in June, that won't change any, was reappraisals, the first one in June, uh, the equalization board will convene, so.
Alright, but I guess, is that, uh, I guess that's.
Yeah, that's pretty much it, uh, just gotta let y'all know that it's happening, uh, the, the property sessions folks are already working on it, and, uh, y'all, uh, get those change notices in March, April, and, uh, then the certified tax rate, y'all get that or something like that. But if y'all got any questions or anything like that, you know, thinking something right now, y'all don't worry about it, just give me a holler.
Does the equalization board, do they go over all the properties, or just somebody who has a issue with their property?
Yes, yes, if, if, uh, if a hearing's brought to them, it's gotta be brought to them, and now, yeah, so anybody that, that wants to do that, first week of June is when, when that'll happen, so.
Will Brandon Marsh put, uh, matter?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, uh, both of them will be ran, the change notices, and then the, the equalization board, and then, uh, whatever each city and the county does as far as the certified rate, yeah, that'd be focused on this. But yeah, y'all got any questions, or y'all get those change notices, and you're like, okay, this can't be right, y'all come, come to this thing, we'll, we'll get it, get it right, fair and equitable, I guess, is the, is the, is what they tell me, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you for coming. All right, we got the Sunny Johnson, dogs, hit play, dogs every place, uh, where's Sunny here? Now here, we, we'll move on. How the trees planted at the cemetery, renovate that stuff, okay?
Um, there, I just had a lot of complaints about the trees that have been planted, the ni- like on the new graves, new little trees, which are gonna grow up and have roots, that are gonna dig those little, um, stones and stuff up. Um, I, I just think there should be some sort of paper given out when you purchase a plot, or some kinda rule that you put out, where people know that, um, I mean, if the people are trying to, if we're trying to mow the yards and, and keep them neat, we can't have all these trees and stuff out there that's running. We don't need.
There not supposed to be any trees planted.
I was gonna say, didn't we, there was already that they couldn't put anything up there.
Yeah, that was paid, that was paid several years.
Who's the tree monitor?
What we got right now, we got some trees that we've got to clean up, and we done probably six or eight of them. And then we had a little hole, so we had a chainsaw on, it wasn't running, but we got some parts now, and we got two pretty big, we're gonna clean them up. And I think what happens, I don't think the people planted the trees beside the tombstones. I think probably the birds or somebody lacked the seed, got there, and then it become a little tree, and it just kept growing until now it's pushed the tombstone upwards.
Right, babe.
But, but we gotta get rid of them.
Right.
But we're doing, we're in the process of doing it, we're cleaning them up, and like Frankie said, we're not gonna have a tree.
But is there something together, is there something together that you give the person that just bought the plot so that they understand the rules? Do we do that?
No.
There should be the paperwork.
What paperwork, that's what I'm asking, is there paperwork? When I buy a plot, I don't, I hadn't bought a plot.
When you buy a plot, you just get a deed, it does not, I think it has the rules of the cemetery.
I know, we, we need to add one thing, we have got to clarify, and I, we've been down this road time and time again. When you buy, when you buy a plot out there, you're buying the right for eternity, you're not buying a piece of property. We got so many people in this town, and, and outside of the town too, could actually think that they bought a piece of property. If they bought a piece of property, they'd be paying Jackson? They buy the, they buy the right for eternity, and eternity only, they do not own that property.
Does that deed say that? Does the deed say that, or do you?
It's a deed for burial.
It's a deed for burial.
Deed for burial, which means it's a right of eternity.
We've been down, basically, we've been down that.
And, and it is that they, you can put summer flowers, but you can't.
I ain't telling you that. There's not supposed to be anything on that ground. From March of the fifteenth to October of the fifteenth, there's nothing supposed to be on that ground. That was passed ten, twelve years ago, because of the conflict we were having with mowing and weeding.
And there are some.
The weeding is gonna double, we're paying eleven hundred, we're paying eleven hundred right now, every time we mow and weede that thing. And it was gonna almost double if they keep putting stuff out there, that's the reason why.
I'm just saying, I just bought a plot.
Yeah, but there ain't supposed to be nothing out there on that ground.
And then you're right there when you go.
That's what I was thinking, that's what I was thinking.
Another thing we need to, to do on the cemetery is do, like a new cemetery, it's there. Well, we, we'll, we'll get that later, I'll move on.
We can't hear you.
Okay, what we got?
He's moving out.
The cemetery, the new, the new cemetery where nobody's being buried. What it is, in the middle, it's got a bellis wagon, and a water stand. And when it's saling, the people that's buying that are not wanting water on their, their people's spirit. So what we got dirt out there, how we gonna move it? And then I'm gonna get this level, people that with Tennessee tractor, I'm gonna get him to come and give us the estimate, to put it to grade. Where the water will run over in the little ditches, and when you bury somebody, that bellis wagon won't be there anymore. It'll be leveled and the water will run off. That's what, we can't, right now, I don't think, well, you know about it, uh, that's not feasible to bury somebody out there right now.
I appreciate you taking interest in it, Mayor, but that dirt was sitting there, it's been sitting there for eight years and nothing done with it.
Well, I mean, and you, you know, you, you're not gonna wanna bury people and then they drive by, and the water is up around.
We get, we get a flood out there, it look like a lake out there.
But he can come in there, he done that job down there for long at, at Bogota, Tennessee tractors and the dirt moving. And I think we could probably get that done at a reasonable price, and then it'll be flat, and we won't have to worry about it no more.
We need to plant a ditch out too, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, right, we gotta do that. I, I just wanna mention it to you while we're on the cemetery, that this needs to be done.
You know, also, we need to think about, Don, there'll have to be a driveway put on this far south side.
On the east side, next to Tiddl, or on this side?
Yeah, on the south side.
Okay, okay, alright.
Next to Tiddl over there, or even down through that.
Yeah, okay.
Cause that's gonna be so far from when, when it's the street.
Right, to the other.
Carry the.
Okay, we gotta put a cover to it, put in there.
Well, I don't have enough type of cover, we just gonna, we're gonna lose some of the lot, trying to put in the driveway.
Oh, put a driveway there, okay.
Carry in the casket that far.
Yeah, two floor, yeah, 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 okay. Alright, I just wanna mention that, that I think, and there's people say, there's talks, that we don't wanna be in the water. We don't wanna bury people in the water, so that's, it's not my idea, it's people that, uh, that don't want that.
We have got the signs up.
We need, we need, let's try to get that, well, we can talk about that next month, did that?
Okay, okay, you on the table that?
Table, or you were gonna agree that that's what needs to happen?
Okay.
If something's drafted and handed out with it, that.
Cause you gotta get an estimate, we can't do it today.
Well, yeah, but I gotta have the man to come over here and drive over it with a, he'll take a laser or whatever, and then he'll tell you how much dirt is gonna move, and then he'll tell you how much it is, and if we don't have the money, I guess we're buried for water. I'm gonna go ahead and let him go, and ask him, how long that was it there? Alright, sir.
Finally voted to do that back eight to nine years ago, I'm happy to get done.
Well, I think we can get it done, open that, sure. Alright, we got to.
Jack, you did get some signs up, and I appreciate that, but each, each of those streets out there now are numbered.
Yeah.
But if anybody'd like to have a name put on it, and make a contribution to the cemetery fund, we would be glad to put you that family name up.
Alright, you ready, y'all ready to move on to everybody?
Like, sometimes we would, if it was in the middle of the week, we would do it on Saturday, but I, but Sunday in the churches already has stuff scheduled now, so maybe it's on Sunday, then we turn it to another day. Okay. But this is on Tuesday, so, yeah, so scratch that. So it'd be, just be October third, first, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's doing it on the thirty first.
Yeah, on Tuesday.
Cause I believe that's when all the churches are gonna do that.
Okay, we got Frankie, we got resolution on the first, oh.
I'd like to refer that to the committee and let them go over that and make updates, and, and also, uh, for the board and the members of the committee. If next Thursday would be appropriate, um, say six thirty next Thursday night.
City center.
City center, is there?
I'm good, and Michael said he's good, six thirty, we're good.
Let me check, next Thursday, you said the twenty sixth?
And we'll, we'll continue working on the policy and procedure then, but, and.
Go out, so be the nineteenth, okay.
Everybody got your copy of the resolution book and, uh, the, uh, charter book? And I still, little help, basically. What did, what happened to the ordinances? Did we not have a, a book that had all the ordinances in?
I got it on there.
Francis, we did.
Just, you, it is, we, we had a, a, like, it was like an old ledger.
Mm-hmm.
And it had all the type written ordinances.
We, we looked for it for the latest bump, and then we can't find it. What I have found is portions of it that have been inserted into the charter book. And if the rest of it's included or is, uh, in with the resolutions, but that's not a way, that, that's got, I mean, we've got to get that rectified. And that's what we're trying to do now, and all this stemmed out of M T A, M T A told us several years ago, it wasn't just Ridgely. It was the vast majority of small towns like us, we're not like Memphis, Nashville, Knoxville, where they've got a team of loggers on staff full of hands. That, we've got a lot of updates that need to be made. One provision in there that, that we were looking at, was that we don't wanna get caught again, like we did this last time, with Mr. Bill Davis passing away in Antrim, Mary, and not knowing where to go.
Who?
There need, there need, there needs to be a provision to handle, I mean, we, it is, if you go with the, what the charter said, charter said five spare steps in. But there needs to be a provision that, that stipulates that in the interim period, if, if the mayor elect was to pass it, how do we handle that process? We need, we need, we need to look at now, with the mayor. But there's several of them, and they just need to be. Not challenged, just. And any input that anybody's got, we're more than welcome to.
Something like these, roll it on as quick as you can, with all the money you need to have.
Next Thursday, six thirty, is that every, alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, Frankie, we're getting that volume together for us.
That was, I appreciate that.
I, I did notice that over the years, the numbers of, resolution numbers, ordinance numbers, and there's variation to them. I think it needs to be consistent, uh, format.
Oh, yeah, that, that's what I told everybody, this is not something we're gonna be able to accomplish in one night, we spent, uh, uh, two weeks ago, when we met, we spent, uh, a pretty good while that night.
Couple hours.
One thing, everything that needs to be changed, certain things need to be changed.
Updated.
It needs to be updated.
Yeah.
Yeah, update, that's all, that's the key.
But that's what, that's why we're asking for input on it, because I mean, and, and I'll emphasize again, it's not something that'll happen in one night. This is gonna take us several, several weeks of meetings. Then it's gonna be turned over to MTA, they'll, they'll put it in the appropriate format. And as far as the charter is concerned, once it's put in the proper format, then we gotta get back to Rusty Grills and it'll be presented before the general assembly for it. So, uh.
Takes a while, yes.
You know, it's, it's not gonna happen overnight, like you just said, Frankie, but, you know, uh. Every one of you, I can get along with every one of you, but all of you, some of them been elected, some of them been appointed, but all of you was in the coffee shops, beating on doors, at the grocery stores, asking for our vote. And just, you know, represent to, the town, that's all I'm gonna say.
And recently, the mayor called a meeting, excuse me, my understanding, mayor called a meeting, and I don't know how important it was for somebody from state to talk to people, and yet only one of them showed up. What's up with that? We wanna buy it. I wanna buy it.
I told you mine, I, I verified it.
At the meeting we had, this committee meeting, it was discussed about that meeting, and I told everybody there that night. That little meeting, it was at that committee meeting. My grandson and his wife was having a baby. They already knew that it was gonna be induced. And we were at the hospital with that baby.
That's a good plan.
But I told them I was gonna be gone all week because of arts and crafts, that's my busiest week of the year. How many weekends I work a year?
Frankie didn't sell yards and crafts, I heard that.
I, I said I'd be, I would not be nowhere around.
And then you forgot it. That's what.
Now, I thought, you know, this stuff's not in the least, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight, it's not gonna happen all in a year, but, yeah, we all have, you know, community, the board, everything. Right now, have, have an opportunity to make a start in the right direction, start making some changes and, and, you know, that's what's on the table.
That's it?
I was talking with mom this morning. We think about this, uh, you know, not just Ridgely, Tidlinville, small town America. We have generations that leave and never come back. And we've got to do something to make this town attractive for somebody to wanna stop and, you know, put their roots down, you know, raise a family, whatever. But, you know, John Doe's coming from across the river, coming in there, you know, be honest, we, I wouldn't wanna stop in Ridgely, but it's not gonna happen overnight, but we gotta start somewhere. And that, everybody in here included, not just y'all, not just y'all, everybody's got to do their part, and.
Yep.
So, anyway.
First thing, this joint has got to work together.
Yes.
A divided house of Paul, and they've got to start working together and make the community better. And I think Paul, you don't want that, or you wouldn't be up there where you're at today. But we wanna make it better, not worse. We want a good town, I want people to move here. I live here and I'm proud of Ridgely, Tennessee, and I always have been. I've been here as a cop for thirty-five years, I know y'all started hearing that, but that's the truth. I'm proud of Ridgely, and I want it to grow. And it's gonna grow, people, it's gonna grow, get ready, it's coming. These streets are gonna be more busy than they ever been in the next couple of years. This little town going from poor town to rich town, your property's gonna be worth a lot more money. You may have to pay a little more, but it's gonna be worth a lot more money than it used to be. So, we want a better town, we want a good town, and we want people to work together, that's our key issue.
And we wanna be well represented throughout the state instead of being the lapping stock.
Yeah, I don't want that, no.
Right.
Sure don't.
I agree.
Let's wing your eye, Cap. Well, we're, we're gonna move on, and thanks for the input. Uh, I suggest we, uh, give the people, the street and the water employees a dollar and a half an hour raise. I just think that they, they work in this mud and, and they handle our sewage and everything, and it's a, it's a tough job, and some of them are making twelve dollars and a half an hour. And they're not making a lot of money, you know, of course, I don't know what the board wants to do, but it would really be nice if we would give these people a dollar and a half. Cause small town, they wear a lot of hats, they know how to work. And what we do, we, we, we work, and we don't see that, but I see it, and when you're standing in your poop and you make twelve fifty, I, I don't like that. Yeah, I say, it's money, there's money there to do it.
I'm gonna say that.
Okay. I know, but there's money to do it, they wouldn't, they, before it was the money for the two dollars an hour for a young woman.
It was, it was in the budget, no.
No, that was not.
No ma'am, Brenda, when, when we did the budget, Marty Kay had already been gone, and we did the budget on.
Marty didn't go until July.
No ma'ams.
He did the budget.
Beth started in June. June the twelfth is when Beth started, and Marty hadn't been here for a couple of weeks prior to that. But the budget was based on what Beth started out on and the raises that Don and I had agreed to, is what the amount in the budget was on as far as her salary. It was not based on Marty's, cause she had been gone a while before we did the budget.
Okay, when, whenever you finish September, will you go ahead and run us the report so we can look and see just why? Cause I want the guys to have a raise, but let's see what's in their budget and see, but we'll need to have September.
Kay and I had started working on, um, the amendments for the golf cart and, uh, Beth's raise. And so, we finagled it to where we have more down on the cash basis instead of up here anyway. Um, we do have money in the budget for this raise.
Just give us the September financial reports and let us look at it, cause I wanted to have a raise.
Well, but it's not gonna show the extra money because we haven't done the amendments yet.
We can, we can compare the financial report to the budget to see what is there, and see where they're at right now.
Yeah, it just won't, it just won't.
If you finish September, then we'll know more about what we're looking at and what we can do.
But, but.
We got five out there, right? You got three low ones that are actually.
James Tubbs, Devonte Kim, Darryl Cox.
So I'm gonna make a motion, they got fifty cents in July.
Yep.
And for right now, to get started with it, I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and give them a dollar. That'll be a dollar and a half total for this.
Is that all of the dollar?
Those three.
Oh, what about the other two people?
Those three.
You gotta be fair enough to the board.
Okay, I wouldn't work for what they, I wouldn't do what they do for what they pay. And look at, look, you got some low.
Now, one just took a test, he said he can do a two dollar and a half raise based on his employment here, but here in the next couple of weeks.
Alright, Frankie, I have a question for you though. If you're deciding those three can raise but up to nine, how would you like it if everybody? Well, no, no, no. How would you like it if everybody from the board got a raise except you?
I don't care what it is.
You don't give a crap. But you know, Don.
I'm getting a two dollar and fifty cent raise here, and then jump the ball.
Just get out of there.
It doesn't, it doesn't make, no, it doesn't.
It does when you look at the dollar amount, what, what the.
Okay, alright, let me say something. If you're looking at the dollar amount, okay, look at downtown Ridgely. Look who's got one of the shottiest buildings downtown that doesn't do a thing about it. That thing needs to go. You need to start paying the taxes, buddy.
Let's don't make it a band-aid up down here, we don't need that. Let's just keep it, moving on. Okay, what do y'all want, a dollar?
I don't know.
I second it.
What, what, what you got out there?
Just three people, no, three.
It's all wrong. The mayor thinks he can get the other two? I mean, that's. You can roll the thread a little bit.
Alright, buddy. We had fifty cents, is what they had, and then, and of course, I understand where you're coming from, it's your seat, the boys at the plant, there's Jackie, he's been here for years and years, and Donnie, he's running the water plant. And the boys are not making any money down here, they're standing in the mud. But Jackie and them, they have to get in the mud some, and Donnie, he has to dig, and then he also has to run the plant. And, you know, if we've got the money to give them all a raise, but it's up to you. Uh, it's up to the board to decide if you're gonna give the, the workers the money and not give Donnie and Jackie the money. That's all, all of them.
You need to make it even for everybody else. They gotta make it even for all five of them. You got three guys over here that's getting, getting the rest, and these two guys doing the same stuff, shoveling the mud and stuff, that ain't fair. You gotta use your common sense here, Frank, come on, buddy.
Common sense is look at the dollar amount, what's in, you gotta figure everybody.
You gotta, you gotta look at your, your guys busting their ass out in the mud and the snow and the cold.
Don't, don't, don't talk bad.
Go ahead.
You can talk, it's still good.
Hey, you gotta make it even. I don't care what your dollar signs on the paper show, these guys are out there every day working together, that's a team. You gotta cut your team up, giving three guys this, and none for over here.
This gonna hurt a lot.
That's right, that's right, can't handle it. You gotta give it, you gotta make it straight, all five of them get it, all five or none, you can't do three or none.
I make a motion that is to do the, I amend the motion. I, I asked to amend the motion to do a dollar for all five.
There you go.
That's it. You know, here's a second, you got a second?
Right here.
I'll second it.
There's a lot, there's a lot of benefits that the employees get that public don't know they got.
But it's hard to support a family, I bought very little money they make here. If you wanna eat these people. And let it turn over, let it turn over, don't erase the family.
Would you like to hear the benefits that they all get?
I know they get insurance, they get sick leave, and that's, that's fine, they shouldn't get that.
We're gonna have, we're gonna get a second, or what?
Over, over the, over the past two years.
Frankie says.
Okay, roll call.
They got amended the motion.
They handed out twenty thousand dollars for the past two years.
That's. Is that, you go second?
She's amended the motion.
Okay, and you're going here a second?
Got eight thousand.
So we're gonna give a dollar?
We didn't, well, that took taxes out.
Roll call. They already, they already have to be there, uh, some of that, they take that time off, but, but, uh, they, there's, Jackie has to do sometime, and Donnie, the weekend, water plant has to be looked after. And we pay them overtime already.
Well, no, that's not, we take overtime.
Overtime, okay, so you take the time off, okay, but that has to be done. You and, you have to be there.
Yes.
And the water plant is my priority. The water above everything has to be took care of. We got to have the water plant, and it has to be run the way it has to be run. We have to have security to water plant and make sure we don't get poisoned or the water. That's the number one priority that's down below the mayor. Wanna roll call on that?
W C?
No.
Brenda?
Present.
Dennis?
I don't know yet.
Nancy?
Nancy?
Yes.
So.
I. Dennis.
You're right, you're right.
Dennis, you're gonna.
Alright, so, tie goes to Don.
Okay, uh, I vote yes, we're gonna give them the money.
You got, that's amended, you do all five, now you got the motion, motion on the floor is to pay all five of them.
Uh, motion on the floor, pay all five.
That was an amendment.
What?
That, she, the motion was to amend the, the motion that was on the floor. To include all five, that passed, now you got a motion to pay all five of them.
I thought it was just.
We amended the amendment. She amended the motion to raise the standard family, pay all five. We got a motion on.
Your first motion is up.
Now we have to go again, I asked the motion.
Now, just have to make the mo.
Don, the motion's already there now, because the amendment passed, the amendment passed to pay all five of them, and you got a motion on the floor to pay all five of them a lot.
Okay. Roll call.
So.
No, we don't have a second?
We don't have, we don't have a second?
You already had a second. I made the motion, you second it, and it reversed.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, W C?
I got a raise without coming.
I'm talking about, you asked about an employee getting a raise.
He did, he got a fifty cent raise, and I think it ought to be a dollar, like these guys.
Who is that?
Cause he's a policeman. He got a fifty cent one.
Who is he?
Chris Boucher. And, and, you know, Jaws, only two I got, and they deserved a dollar just like the rest. I, I know, I'm totally.
Chris got two dollars.
And, and, money back in the day, they did got it up from fourteen something of being a cop.
He got his two dollars.
Yeah, he got his two dollars, but now you don't come up with them.
These boys, these boys did nothing back then, Terry. They got two dollars and then another fifty.
I'm just saying, every officer around here gets paid twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour anywhere in town.
Then you gotta go back, then you gotta go back.
And I know we're a poor town, but we need to come up a little bit, cause he driving from Union City, they a certified officer here. So help him with his gas, but don't give him a car, and keep the car here.
He's gonna got two dollars, if you're gonna do that, then you gotta.
He's getting paid eighteen dollars an hour, is what he getting.
That's where it's supposed to be. He, he got two dollars and then fifty cents, and, and y'all didn't get that.
I'm just saying, he, he deserves a dollar. We're trying to keep, it's my thing, we're my thing. We are trying to keep officers, we need to get.
I'd like to amend that motion, this include Chris and him. This police, this police department is wearing their.
We're bringing down it.
And any way that we can help them, we need, we need to do it.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
And they can make another motion, if that motion is amended.
We ain't got all that other most, just amended that one.
You can't have two of them at the same time.
Okay, you second the minute to add Chris. Alright, so, W C?
We set the budget back in June, and I think we should've stayed with it. But I, I have to vote no on all this pay increase, we, we handing out raises like we got plenty of money. You know, we, we done handed out two raises this year, and, uh, it wasn't even budget time. I vote no.
Dennis? Nancy?
Yes.
Frankie?
No.
So, Don, you have to break the tie, to amend the motion.
Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Okay, now, to vote on the motion.
Are we voting on our money now?
Okay, so.
It could be the motion as.
So now we have the motion made by Brenda to do all the bo. So now we have the motion made by Brenda to do all the bo, all five of the city guys and Chris, and Renee seconded it. Okay, so, W say?
Roll call.
W say?
Go ahead.
We're, okay, we have voted on amending the motion, now we're voting on the motion to give all the raise.
Brenda?
Dennis? Nancy?
Yes.
Frankie?
Yes.
Okay, so it passed, passed. So they give their money.
Agenda though, Mayor.
Well, we got, no, I got something, we got, we got, we got Trey Wood, okay Trey? You want to vote for the fire department? We got, we got problems with fire department here, we need to, uh, address, we got maintenance, we don't have the equipment to work on the trucks, we got, Bob says, Dan, go, go ahead and discuss it, please, please.
Uh, our radio system is not working properly, which nine-one-one is trying to get everything taken care of for us, so I was all over the digital. As of right now, we can hear a tone when we get a fire, we can't hear anything, any kind of words coming off the radio at all. Uh, if it wasn't for dispatch calling my personal phone, we wouldn't know, we're not even saying. Our bunker gear, where we hang all our fire equipment, is rotten out at the bottom, it's got black mold, it's been there since ninety-five, when the station was built. We don't have any kind of tools to do any kind of maintenance on any of the trucks or any of the equipment. Our truck too, our pumper truck, which we carry to the, to the fire and put it at the fire plug, the, it's got a little control knob on for the auto, for the pump. It broke, if you take it out of the station, go down the highway, let off the gas, it's gonna, it's just like you guys' crew said, at fifteen hundred RPMs.
Is the generator don't run?
The generator, we can't get the, I couldn't get the generator to crank off the tanker truck, so, we have one on the new truck, it's a real small one, but, uh.
We need to upgrade that.
At least get it fixed and not get a new one.
Okay.
Um, the, also the tanker truck, what it uses to pump water for like grass fires and to transfer water faster, it uses a tra, like a three inch trash pump.
Two inch trash.
It's a two inch trash pump?
Two inch trash pump, yeah.
It hasn't ran in, I know, at least six to seven years.
It ain't get thrown.
It can't get it thrown, it needs to be replaced. Right now, the only way we can use that tr, that truck is to take that big huge, pull off and dump it, and that's all we can use it.
And you still working on the hose?
And, we've got, I've got pictures on my phone, and I, I mean, I'll carry anybody over and let them look, we've got hoses and equipment just scattered everywhere, but we have nowhere to put it. I mean, we've got space, maybe this wide to walk down in between our bunker gear and the fire trucks.
Hey, question, all right, is there a grant that can be applied for?
I don't have a clue.
Yes, they are in there.
Cause I was gonna say, I just, some of this is gonna be expensive, so we need to get a grant. You can get a grant, and we're, I'm sure.
That's what you need to do.
Candy can work with you, try and get a grant, so, and then that way, cause I know some of this is gonna be, some of it sounds like you're gonna need a new truck.
Right. Well, no, the truck, I mean, the truck is actually fine, we would love to have a new truck, but it's financially impossible.
Right. That is the problem, if you look at the budget on the fire department, it's not, there, there is no money allocated there for them to do these things.
And right now, I think if we can look for a grant, you know, work for Candy and look for a grant, and go back with us, and then maybe we can start addressing.
I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention, I mean, I think the world, I think the world of Charles, but he's not gonna come down here and ask for nothing.
No.
He's, he's not that type of person. And I mean, I've been around it all my life, and it's. Well, they're, they're working on our radio, they're, they're taking care of that, we're waiting on when it says they can come and look at it, see, it may have been hit in the lighting, we don't know.
He's gonna, he's gonna rectify that problem.
Yeah, they're, they're working on our radio system, and they're.
Nine-one-one can help you some on your equipment, I'll have to.
But nine-one-one's on for communication.
They look like they could check into that. Yeah, they got plenty of money.
They can only, it's kinda like the code, it's just you don't use it for a certain thing, their communication. And we, we tried to get somebody for the sheriff's department, they're the nine-one-one, don't think that buys us radios, and dispatch.
That's why I say, just if we, if you look for a grant.
But they're in the process of trying to swap over, I know, like both fire departments and the rescue squad over to digital within the next year or so. So, that's gonna, that's gonna be a whole, that's gonna be a whole lot different, but right now, they're trying to put in a new console with the dispatch, because we're having a lot of problems out of it. It's, it's blowing a radio about every two, three weeks.
Sorry, can I have a copy?
The night dispatch, you make a radio try.
They do, they set, they set us the tone off, and tell us where the fire's at, what we have. As of right now, like the fire over here, Jackie's employees has on North Street, I heard the tone, I mean, he's right around the corner, I had no idea where it was at until I walked outside.
Yeah, we seen this model.
You know, you, you can hear a loud tone, and then all you hear is a bunch of static.
So they don't call you on your shelf?
They do, they do right now, 'cause they know our radios are down, they call me, and they call Charles.
Is your turn that gear out of date?
A lot of it is.
You're not supposed to wear it.
No.
I had a few pair of boots, so I'm still worried about when Chisholm starts.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Now, the rescue squad, we gotta give a whole lot of bunker gear, some of it's, some of it's, it's hot, and we literally gave it to fire department to go through and get something a little bit better, I mean, they're, they're still having, they're still wearing stuff right now, that they were wearing when the fire station was proceeding out there.
But what we need though, on some of these repairs, we need bid, or not bids, but we need prices, so we know what we're looking at. I know we don't have enough in the budget to do it, but it might be something that we need to look at if we have the prices.
Like a trash pump, I think it's roughly around, what, four hundred bucks?
Four hundred bucks.
But that's why I say, we need prices on this and that.
The throttle on that second truck, maybe a hundred at the most.
Yeah, but if we can have prices, then we can look at our budget and see what we've got, and then we can go from there. I mean, we're, it's nice to know that all this is going on, we didn't know.
And that's what I'm, I just wanted to bring you know the tension, and I know he's not going through.
Yeah.
You know, he, he don't wanna come down here and beg for anything, and I'm not begging, but I mean, this is, this is, this is, this is putting our citizens at risk, I know if my house burnt, and I knew all this, I'd have a lawsuit.
That's why I say, go ahead and beg, but if you can bring in prices next month, then that way, we've got an idea of what we can look at and what we can do to help it out right now. Right, but that's why I say if you bring this, we can figure out what we can do. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.